Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you so much for joining us here today for our in-person and virtual opportunity to hear from members of the community from the regarding the Select Housing Levy Committee Public Hearing specifically dedicated to talking about the 2023 Seattle Housing Levy. The date is April 19th, 2023, and the time is 4:32 PM. Again, this is a full opportunity for us to hear from members of the community about the proposed 2023 Housing Levy as transmitted by the Mayor's Office that the Council just began deliberating this month. We will have next month and the following month to go over any additional ideas that members of the community or our colleagues have, and that is the sole purpose of this meeting. If there's no objection, today's agenda for the public hearing will be adopted. Hearing no objection, the agenda is adopted. Madam Clerk, will you please call the role for who is present with us in our public hearing this afternoon?
Councilmember Herbold. Councilmember Juarez. Councilmember Lewis.
Present.
Councilmember Morales. Councilmember Nelson.
Present.
Councilmember Peterson.
Present.
Councilmembers I want.
Present.
Councilmember Strauss.
Present.
Madam Chair Mosqueta.
Present.
Madam Chair, that is six present.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Colleagues, again, I want to thank you for the opportunity to hear from folks. We have about 27 people signed up online, and we have six people in person. We will go ahead and do the first three in person, and then the first three online, the next three in person, the next three online, and then we'll stay online so that we can keep it balanced here today. We will provide a full two minutes opportunity for public comment. I don't think I need to run the video, but just as a reminder, you'll hear a chime when you have 10 seconds to wrap up your public comment. Please keep your comments focused on the 2023 Proposed Housing Levy. If you do hit the end of your allotted time, which will be two minutes, again, the microphone will be muted, so please do send in any remaining comments that you'd like to share with members of the public or with us at council@seattle.gov. For folks who are listening online, it would be great if you could disconnect after your allotted time, and we will make sure to continue broadcasting on Seattle Channel or the other listen-in options provided on today's agenda. Just before we jump into it, I want to thank my colleagues who are here with us today, those who are either in person or virtual, and folks who might be listening in but not as part of the roll call this morning, this or this afternoon. This is one of two public hearings solely dedicated to the Housing Levy proposal. Hello, Councilmember Herbold, welcome, our Vice Chair. And in addition to these public hearings that we're having now and at the end of May, we also provide opportunity for public comment at the top of each meeting, which we will have a number of coming up in May and in June. Just as a reminder, I want to thank folks from the Office of Housing and our central staff who provided two meetings throughout the course of the last three weeks to provide a summary of the housing investments from the previous Housing Levy. I just want to reiterate the amazing success that Seattle has had with our Housing Levy investments with more than 16,000 people estimated to be estimated to live in levy-supported housing that we have already invested in at any given time. That's a huge accomplishment. We were also a national leader in putting forward a Housing Levy proposal and have seen not only wild support for it, but have had wild success, in my opinion. We have been able to surpass our initial expectations of how many units we were going to be able to provide, but also how many people we were going to serve who came in and out of those units. Through the Housing Levy in Seattle, we in Seattle have been able to invest in first-time homeownership opportunities in addition to creating more rental units. We have created housing stability for thousands of families, and as we know, this provides a solid foundation for maintaining health and well-being and so that people can participate in their local community, local economy, create pathways out of generational poverty, and work towards greater economic stability and self-resiliency and sustainability for communities and families. As we talked about this morning in our committee meeting and two weeks ago in our public meeting, we have seen a huge return on these investments. There is a clear ROI, and we should be proud of this as a community. And for all of its amazing progress that we've championed and we've been able to talk about, we know it's just not enough. Too many folks are falling into housing instability, and often that leads to homelessness. And so this Housing Levy is part of the solution. It provides an opportunity for us to renew the package, but also be bold in pushing forward with new ideas and new ways to create access to affordable housing, homeownership, supportive services, and greater resiliency for our community. Finally, our Affordable Housing efforts that we passed in 2016, we have been able to see how during the COVID pandemic, those housing opportunities, especially for folks at the lowest income, have allowed for us to be able to house folks, but more people unfortunately have have found themselves in greater economic insecurity, and thus housing insecurity, as so many people lost their jobs and their livelihoods during COVID. And we saw the disproportionate impact on folks of color during COVID. More people lost their jobs and housing in the last few years. So we need to do everything that we can as we think about reinvesting in downtown, reinvesting in our economy. Investing in housing is a good economic generator as well for working families, for small businesses, and for individuals and our population health. So I want to thank you all for being part of our community conversation. To take on this entire package is a large challenge, and it's a huge opportunity, a seven-year path forward to investing in working families and our economy by creating opportunities for housing and stable housing through the workforce that provides supportive services. So I look forward to hearing from you all. What would you like to see from the package that we've already been presented with? We talked a little bit this morning about how these housing options can be coupled with childcare, small business support, community space, and creating more than just a unit, but also opportunity for the families who live there, but also the broader economy and for our broader population's health. So thanks so much, colleagues, for your questions, and for members of the community for weighing in. We're going to get right into it. Okay, thanks again for being here. We're going to tee up a two-minute timer, and I'm going to call the first three people in person. Cliff Cawthon, good afternoon. Thanks for being the first one to sign up, followed by David Baker and Tyre Bernard. Good morning, Cliff. Good morning. Good afternoon, Cliff.
Yeah, good afternoon. Thank you, Chair Mosqueta and Vice Chair Herbold and committee members. My name is Cliff Cawthon. I am the Advocacy and Policy Manager for Habitat for Humanity of Seattle King Kettas Counties, and I'm speaking in support of the proposed renewal of the Seattle Housing Levy at $970 million. First of all, thank you for your amazing work on this. The Seattle Housing Levy is impactful and groundbreaking tool that, as we've just heard, has made a huge difference in the lives of so many Seattleites. The $970 million investment over seven years and the $51 million for homeownership specifically will finally allow those who need a home to have a safe and affordable place to live. Right now, we have a shortage of 30,000 affordable homes at 50% AMI or less, and for those who are slightly above as well. One of our recent homeowners that you may have seen on news, Amber Cortez, a local art and culture worker, was struggling to continue to live in Seattle, and she would have been priced out of the city if not for Habitat's Capital View Development, including her neighbor as well, Bukely. So we still need to continue to invest in the entire housing continuum moving forward for people like Amber and also her neighbors, as well as so many other Seattleites. In fact, thanks to levy over, as Chair Mosqueta said, over 16,000 people who are nurses, who are grocery store workers, who are bus drivers, are living in homes here in Seattle, are able to be part of the community, including many of our healthcare providers that during the pandemic did fantastic work that I can't even begin to fathom the kind of stress and kind of sacrifices they had to make. And so when it comes to affordable homeownership, this triples the funding compared to the last levy. It helps us realize Seattle's equity goals, and these equity goals are even more pressing given a racial homeownership gap in Seattle, and particularly with BIPOC families being systematically displaced from the city. So I strongly urge you to renew this levy and support proposed funding levels. So let's go boldly forth and create a safe and decent place for everyone to live. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Cliff. Thanks for getting us started here this afternoon. I wanted to ask IT if you could help out. There's some folks who are trying to dial in remotely, and they are letting me know that they're getting a busy signal. So if there's any support that can be provided to IT for folks who are dialing in remotely, we will get that handled. Sorry about that, David. Please go ahead and come on up, followed by Tyre Bernard. Thanks, Tyre.
Good afternoon to the members of City Council. My name is David Baker, and I am a Real Estate Development Project Manager with Homestead Community Land Trust. We combine housing development with counseling, education, foreclosure prevention, and other support services to create a growing inventory of permanently affordable homes and to enhance homeowner success. Every home we develop and sell at an affordable price to an income-qualified buyer is kept affordable to all future buyers. Of the 245 homes in our trust, more than 200 have benefited from city funding, with the vast majority of those funds coming from the levy. We are grateful for the generosity of Seattle citizens who support a funding stream that is a model for other communities. The proposed levy is a continuation of smart investment in the full continuum of affordable housing, including homeownership. It significantly boosts investment in homeownership, including more resources for permanently affordable homes, down payment assistance, and support for low-income homeowners to remain stably housed. It triples the funding for homeownership compared to the last levy and helps us realize Seattle's equity goals for putting homeownership within reach of people harmed by discrimination, racial covenants, and redlining. The levy creates homeownership opportunities for people like Siobhan, a single mom who used to live with her five children in a two-bedroom apartment in Maple Valley, a case manager who works to help others find housing. She and her children were able to return to their home neighborhood and to their schools by buying a home made affordable by levy funds. On behalf of Homestead's staff and its stakeholders, I urge you to renew the levy at $970 million. This will give thousands of people the opportunity to find an affordable home in Seattle, realizing our shared vision for an affordable, equitable, and inclusive community. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And Tyre, 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 thank you for correcting me.
No worries. I get it all the time.
And just draw the microphone a little closer.
Oh, yeah. I'm good to go. Forgive me for not being familiar with the political nature of this. I am a mechanical engineer. I also have a background in civil engineering and economics from school. I wanted to first start off with saying I'm fully in support of the of the Housing Levy at $970 million. I'd even like to see it further, but over the time of you guys developing this levy and going to some of the public comments, I feel like there's this increased focus on the need for these housing because, as you guys established, there's a significant need. But I feel like not all buildings are created to equal, and with my experience designing buildings, I just want to urge a continual dedication toward the life cycle of these buildings. I know that currently the I you could correct me if I'm wrong, but I think you guys have a evergreen sustainability checklist and some other sort of checklists to guide the construction of these, like standards to guide the building of of these buildings, but I don't think that they're enough. And with this new $970 million, I don't think you really have an excuse to pick and choose between supplying need, but supplying it with bad houses. I think that you could you could accomplish both tasks together, and you could I urge an investment in sustainability with these houses as you develop them and just proper design considerations instead of just like I've gotten the sentiment that it's a pump, like pump it out because we need it now type of thing, but you can you can achieve both things. You can you can pump it out, but build it considering the life cycle of the building, and that this is just the beginning. Like, so you signing this levy is just the start of the process. Those buildings are going to be out for 50 to 100 years after that. So keep in mind the life cycle of those.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Okay, let's go to the folks online. We'll do three people online, and we'll come back into the room. Jessie Friedman, followed by Dennis Sills and Michael Seaworth. Good afternoon, Jessie. Star six, then mute just as a reminder for folks, and make sure your online is also off mute. Hello, Jessie.
Good afternoon, Chair Mosqueta. My name is Jessie Friedman, and I'm the Policy Director at Youth Care, who are in strong support of the Housing Levy proposal. The current levy provides funding for Youth Care's Ravenna House Program, which serves primarily LGBTQ+ young people who are experiencing homelessness. There's never been a more urgent time for us to show up for communities like the folks we serve at Ravenna, and the Housing Levy makes it possible. In 2021, Youth Care, in partnership with Community Roots Housing, was fortunate to receive an investment from OH towards construction of the Constellation Center on Capitol Hill, which will provide provide housing and workforce development training programs for housing insecure young people. Unfortunately, in the past year alone, the cost of Youth Care's portion of this project has increased by over $1.5 million, a nearly insurmountable increase for an organization like ours. The levy proposal before you today is an important step towards our shared responsibility to think bigger about addressing the housing crisis, to make sure that eligible organizations can afford to take on the projects that we so desperately need, and to ensure that when Youth Care's young people exit programming, there's an adequate supply of truly affordable housing to meet their unique needs throughout adulthood. This levy also provides us with the opportunity to address another urgent need in our region, wage justice for our frontline nonprofit workers. This proposal takes an important step towards addressing the low wages that leave our workers housing insecure themselves and our housing programs understaffed. To address this, a recent report from the UW recommends an immediate 7% wage increase for our frontline staff in addition to substantial wage increases in the coming years. I recommend that the committee adopt the recommendations of the study into the spending plan for the levy to ensure the additional units of affordable housing do not continue to sit empty and unused. Thank you for your consideration, and I urge the county's Council's support of this historic levy, which supports our most vulnerable young people and those who serve them. Thank you.
Thanks so much. The next person is Dennis, followed by Michael. Good afternoon, Dennis.
Chair Mosqueta and select committee members, thank you for the opportunity to provide public comments. My name is Dennis Sills, and I work at Plymouth Housing, a permanent supportive housing provider to more than 1,200 chronically homeless adults in Seattle. On behalf of those residents, colleagues, and Plymouth Housing, I applaud the Seattle Housing Levy proposal of $970 million over seven years and encourage the City Council to move it forward. Over two years, Plymouth Housing will open private apartment buildings and house 500 people. We will open Blake House in May, the city's first permanent supportive housing high-rise in over 50 years. Without the Housing Levy, many of our residents would not have places to call home. This proposal is a bold step to address the staggering housing need in Seattle. This levy is not just about dollars and projects. It is about making things better for our neighbors. One Plymouth resident was homeless for 20 years and then invested two years and many phone calls to finally receive housing. Our residents come from all walks of life and communities, and many are veterans and seniors. People in Seattle should not have to wait years or even decades to find an affordable home. Plymouth Housing urges the Select Committee to advance this proposal. It lists all areas of levy programs to meet the diverse challenges in our city. We support additional operating and maintenance funding for staff who provide human services every day. We have seen analysis by the Office of Housing that shows that many providers like Plymouth are short-staffed. As we open more buildings to meet the needs of our city, we are asking staff to take on more and more, but not matching that with new resources. This proposal can change that and help lift frontline workers and provide truly competitive wages. Permanent supportive housing operating funding sources are often insufficient, and we are grateful that the city is considering stepping up to help the human service sector. This proposal, coupled with workforce investments from Jump Start, are steps towards dignity for supportive housing workers, and we urge.
Thank you so much. The next person is.
Michael Cyrrath.
Hi, Michael. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Mosqueta and Council members. Again, I'm Michael Cyrrath. I'm the Executive Director of Southeast Effective Development, or SEED, and we're a nonprofit which provides affordable apartments to families and seniors in southeast Seattle. I'm here speaking in favor of the renewal and expansion of the levy. I was able to raise my own kids for a decade in an affordable apartment in our city funded by the Office of Housing. We saved our money. We were able to get a down payment and buy a home. This levy is the single best tool we have to help people with affordability and address the homelessness crisis Seattle and the region's facing. SEED is just one organization, and we alone have multiple sites for developing more affordable homes. Right now, I'm looking at one of our lots that could be developed into affordable apartments. It's screaming for more affordable homes, and the greatest constraint we have is public funding for these new apartments. In addition to these capital dollars, the levy will also help prevent homelessness by investing in resident services and eviction prevention for those neighbors in need. I urge you to be bold and renew the levy at $970 million. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we are going to go back to in-person, and we have Jessie Simpson, followed by Mark Barber, Barbie Harry, and Pauline Van Senuce. Good afternoon, Jessie.
Hi, I'm Jessie Simpson, Government Relations and Policy Manager for the Housing Development Consortium. Thanks for the opportunity to testify today. Seattle faces an exacerbated housing crisis. We need more than 30,000 affordable homes right now, and this shortage will only grow over time unless we act to meet the moment and create more affordable and abundant housing. For over 40 years, the Housing Levy has been foundational for affordable housing in our city. Levy is a proven effective solution with a consistent record of voter support. 16,000 families and individuals live in levy-funded homes. These are essential workers and members of our community, which otherwise never afford to stably live in quality homes in Seattle. This levy renewal at $970 million will build on this legacy. It will create affordable homes, keep families in their homes, and move people experiencing homelessness into permanent supportive housing. The proposed renewal of the levy will build 3,500 affordable homes for people and families who need them most and stabilize housing for 4,500 more people who would otherwise face eviction and homelessness. It will also invest in the workers who turn buildings into homes and ensure that supportive services are available for the people who need them. By investing in affordable housing of all types, the levy will stabilize housing for stabilize housing for thousands of people for generations to come. I urge you to pass this ambitious $970 million levy renewal. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And welcome, Mark, followed by Pauline.
Thank you, Chairman Mosqueta, Vice Chair Herbold, and Councilmember, Committee Members. My name is Mark Barbiere. I'm a board member. I serve on the Board of Plymouth Housing. You heard Dennis eloquently describe why this is necessary. I am grateful for the hard work all of you are putting in through this collaborative and very productive process and 100% endorse this $970 million over seven years for the Seattle Housing Levy proposal and encourage the Council to move it forward. As Dennis mentioned, Plymouth has been scaling up to meet this critical need in our community. We admire the Council taking bold steps to scale up as well. We started in the 80s with 17 units. We're now serving 1,200 residents, and like Dennis mentioned, we'll have 1,700 residents served within the by the end of this next two-year period. And we will continue working hard to raise private dollars that we can leverage against these public funds. We will continue to work to create the wraparound supportive services that create the 97% success rate for permanent supportive housing. The solution that works because we are reconnecting people with their lives by putting a roof over their head, number one, and then allowing them to reconnect with with their own lives by providing them the services they need. That's resource-intensive work, folks, and that means that providing the resources to pay these people on the front lines the wages that they deserve to allow them to do their jobs with dignity is of utmost importance. We applaud your efforts in this regard also. Thank you for the opportunity to provide this public comment. This productive process has resulted in a strong proposal that we encourage you to proceed with. Thank you.
Thank you. Good to see you again. And Pauline, you're welcome to come. Good afternoon.
Hi, and my name is Pauline Van Senuce. It's Americanized from the Dutch. And I do affiliate with the transit riders, but I'm speaking more on my own behalf today. So people know me as the transit fairy, and they've seen me doing cleanup all over the place. I had specially targeted areas at Ballard and Soto and Third and Pike Southbound Metro Bus Stop 522. And it is my belief that if the community sees the real change and sees more cleanup, trash and weeds, that maybe we can have same conversations without screaming at each other about how we're going to fund all the community needs out there. I do believe, though, however, that perhaps housing levies targeting how the current funding that taxing homeowners has maybe been overused because it's a very popular funding source to go. And I think if the smaller businesses saw more cleanup and more support in maybe grant money to help them repair all the damages, the broken windows and all that stuff, if they were supported, that maybe there might be a larger source of funding coming from increased sales tax. And that could be considerable. That's all I did. I know that Metro or UW Ballard Medical Center and the Slice Box and Lays and Bagels might might agree because I've been cleaning in their areas. Also, the homeless people on Third Avenue have noticed, and they seem to like what I do.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your testimony today. Okay, if anybody else in person wants to sign up to provide public comment, you're welcome to. Okay, we're going to shift over to the folks that are listed to sign up on on the remote option here, so we will continue with that. Let me find that sheet. Apologies. Bree Nicoletto, followed by Allison Isenger and Patience Malaba. Good afternoon, Bree. Star six unmute, please.
Greetings, Chair Mosqueta, Vice Chair Herbold, and members of the Council. My name is Bree Nicoletto, and I am Community Development Director at African Community Housing and Development, also known as ACHD. ACHD is a community-led organization that serves the Greater African Diaspora throughout Seattle and South King County, and we are proud to support the renewal of the Seattle Housing Levy. As a new community-led developer focusing on culturally specific Black homeownership for larger intergenerational households, this funding is critical to advancing homeownership in our region, including the Affordable Town Home Project we are working to bring online in Seattle this year. There is already a higher cost to homeownership due to Washington's condo liability laws, which increase the cost of individual units by tens of thousands of dollars. And of course, this is in addition to sharply increase construction and lending costs due to inflation, and this levy must match the true cost of homeownership in our region. We also, of course, know that housing is a continuum, and the stability of tenants is critical to homeownership as well as access to sub-sized, high-quality, affordable rental units. Families cannot move into homeownership without access to affordable rental options and a strong commitment to tenant support. At ACHD, we know this deeply. From 2020 to 2022, we were a rental assistance provider through the ERAP Large Landlord Program, getting out $38 million to thousands of tenants in our community in addition to providing critical eviction prevention services. We know the difficulties that working families and our elders who rent face. The protections and assistance we saw during COVID-19 are still needed today. In fact, they were always needed. Prior to COVID-19, we had virtually no safety net for families and elders facing eviction, and we know homelessness can be traced to eviction. We have seen time and time again tenants who have remained homeless for multiple years over an eviction on their record many times for often just a month of residence. And so now more have our unique stability, subsidy, and increased supply. We appreciate your work on behalf of the communities we serve, and again, voice our strong support for a housing levy that represents the many needs of our community. Thank you for your time and leadership, and have a great day.
Thank you so much. Allison, followed by Patience Malaba. Star six, Allison. All right, let's go ahead and tee up Patience. Allison, just hit star six when you're ready. Okay, Patience, please go ahead. Okay, Patience, please go ahead if you can. Star six. And folks hear me on the, on the onlines. There we go. I see Patience unmuted.
Good afternoon, Chair Mosqueta. Members of the committee, my name is Patience Malaba, Executive Director at the Housing Development Consortium. HTC, together with our members and partners, strongly support the proposal to renew the housing levy at nine hundred and seventy million dollars. The housing affordability crisis has never been greater in our community. Chair, you said this very well earlier in your meeting in the morning. We face a shortage of thirty thousand homes, affordable homes for people with the lowest income. This shortage demands that we rise to meet the moment. And this proposal meets the moment. Renewing and expanding the levy to create more than three thousand affordable rental and ownership homes for people and families who need them most and preventing thousands from experiencing homelessness is fundamentally the task of our moment. It is the task of our generation. We are grateful for your leadership, carrying forward a forty-year tradition and commitment to affordable housing throughout the city by renewing this levy. We would like to see investments in both rental and homeownership maintained in the proposal. Investments in frontline staff who turn buildings into homes sustained in this proposal. Investments in OMS sustained across the board as we move this proposal forward. And we would also like to see some work in incorporating support for resident services in non-permanent supportive housing buildings. We need a fighting chance at maintaining and growing affordable homes in our city. In a city of rising costs for rent, for healthcare, for food, we can't reduce or prevent homelessness without affordable housing. I thank you for taking on this work and running on with the baton. We really appreciate your leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. And Allison, you are welcome to go next, followed by Tiffany McCoy.
Thank you, Chair Mosqueta. Are you able to hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now. Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much for the opportunity to join this public comment. Good evening to all council members. For the record, my name is Allison Eisenher. I'm the Director of the Seattle King County Coalition on Homelessness. And we mobilize our community to challenge systemic causes of homelessness and advocate for housing justice. We are here to strongly support your work to review and then put before the voters a housing levy at nine hundred and seventy million dollars or higher. Because as you have heard from all previous speakers, this levy is effective, it is efficient, and it is essential. Today, I just want to give you some small insight into the significance of a specific part of the proposal to invest in the workers who are the ones who, as several have said, turn every unit into a home. It's imperative for the City of Seattle to advance sustainability and wage equity in its contracts with community agencies. The staff who work night shifts, who help people settle sometimes after years or decades of experiencing homelessness, trauma, and significant disability, help people settle into their new homes and connect to their neighborhoods. Those staff are themselves struggling. We worked very hard at the state legislature two years ago to secure a completely inadequate but necessary worker stipend for people in homeless services and housing. And the coalition surveyed frontline staff to ask them what they had used their up to twelve hundred dollar one-time stipend for. To a person, people had used those stipends to pay off loans, to get current on their debt, to pay their own rent. Thank you for your work to make sure that the public understands the value of this housing levy and for renewing it with serious attention to the people who are at the heart.
Thank you, council. Thank you very much, Allison. Please send in the rest of your comments. I'm sorry that last sentence got cut off. Appreciate your testimony. Tiffany, Tiffany will be followed by Tina Eliasen. Good morning, good afternoon, Tiffany.
Chair Mosqueta, members of the committee, I'm Tiffany McCoy and Advocacy Director at Real Change calling in to vocalize our strong support of the housing levy, the renewal, and really appreciate you all going big in this year's renewal. A lot of our vendors at Real Change depend on the housing units that are produced through the housing levy and have been pulled in off the streets because of housing levy dollars being so insupportable housing. And we are also like extremely happy to see the fifty-one million dollars set aside to address racial inequities and Black homeownership in this package as well. And just want to, yeah, you know, that Real Change endorses, fully supports this, supported voting for it and continuing to house more of our, of our neighbors in the city. So, thank you.
Thank you. Tina, followed by Josh Castle. Castle, Castle, excuse me. Tina, good afternoon.
Hi, good afternoon. Thank you, all council members, for having all of us here to speak today. Really appreciate the work you're doing to create a real equitable and affordable housing network in our city and, and region. My name's Tina Ellison. I'm the Director of Housing Services for Compass Housing Alliance. We currently provide almost seven hundred affordable units in the city of Seattle and King County area, housing both chronically homeless individuals and families as well as low-income residents, including seniors, people on fixed incomes, people who have already served, veterans who have served our country in recent years and historically. Outside of this, this funding being able to provide more units, we also need to make sure we're providing services as other of my colleagues on this call have mentioned. Just providing a roof over their heads is just the one step to create the stability that people deserve and need in, in our world. So the renewal of this housing levy is really an opportunity to address both the problem of the lack of affordable housing as well as low wages for nonprofit workers in the human services field. As many of you have read in the news and other times, the work, the challenges our staff are facing is so critical. I myself have worked two grave shifts in the last two weeks. One of my managers worked a twenty-four-hour shift last Monday. We, it is hard to find qualified, quality employees who have the skill sets to do this work at the wages we're paying. This is not just the do-gooder job anymore. We have dealing with people with chronic health issues from physical health to mental health, and we need the right people who have the commitment, compassion, and desire and skills to be able to do that. So thank you so much for the work you're doing and the advocacy you're presenting today and have in the past year to increase our affordable housing market and.
Thank you very much. Please send in the last sentence as well. John Castle.
Hi, good afternoon, or is it good evening, Chair Mosqueta and committee members. My, my name is Josh Castle and I'm the Community Engagement Director for the Low Income Housing Institute, a member of the Housing Development Consortium and of the Seattle King County Coalition on Homelessness. I'm here today to speak in strong support of renewing the Seattle Housing Levy at nine hundred and seventy million dollars, and I want to thank the council for your outstanding work on this. We also strongly support the inclusion of funding for resident services in non-PH, PSH properties. Lehigh, as an affordable housing provider, has used levy funds for numerous projects such as Aurora Heights Housing, The Clay Apartments, The Fry Apartments, Good Shepherd Housing, and Mesbit Family Housing. As a result of these levy investments, Lehigh has been able to leverage dollars to create hundreds of new units of housing for our most low-income residents, in particular, people experiencing homelessness. Just this last year, Lehigh has been able to house two hundred and eighty-one people who were homeless, most of whom have been chronically homeless. We know we have a steep shortage of thirty thousand units for low-income residents while thousands of Seattleites are experiencing housing insecurity and often at risk of falling into homelessness. This is a crucial investment to respond to such an urgent need and would be grateful for your support. Thank you for your time.
Excellent. Thank you very much for your time. At this point, I think I have one more person signed up for public comment in the room. So we will go ahead and come back to the, in the room, and then we'll do the next ten folks listed online. Ms. Marguerite Rashad. You are welcome to come and present. One second, ma'am. Let's start your time again and make sure your microphone's on. Okay, let's try again.
My name is Marguerite Rashad, and I guess I wouldn't miss this for a lifetime. I'm just really shocked and appalled and dismayed. This is twenty twenty-three, and this racism and discrimination is all race-baited around housing and everything that you do. Just look across this country and see what's happening to indigenous Black people as far as them trying to get anything. They're killing us. They're trying to hoodwink and dupe and bamboozle us. And you have a committee, you have commissions, and you have all this garbage that I'm about to take this right now and throw it in that trash can because I feel that another generation happened to suffer up under anything that our constitutional rights right now is bear no ground in this history of this country. Tyree Nichols is dead. I think somebody else died at the hands of somebody that just didn't care about us. And you gonna tell me you guys care about us down here? The devil is a liar and the truth is not in him. And I'm going to tell you exactly what the Bible says, you're gonna reap what you sow. Because we all got a right to be here, even those homeless people down there. You know what I did the other day? Instead of criticizing them, I stood there and prayed for them. And my girlfriend was standing right there. She was wondering what was going on because they need prayer. They don't need to have all this flip-floppy mess going on around them. Give them some people they got a heart for mankind downtown. And fix this situation or get out of your profession. Like I told the other one, go walk your dog and work in your garden if you're not.
Thank you. The next speakers are Andrea Carnes and Brian Lloyd. Good evening, Andrea.
Hi, good evening, Chair Mosqueta. Can you hear me?
I can. Thank you, yes.
Great. Thank you so much to your longstanding dedication of affordable housing and also so many of the rest of the council for this work. I'm Chief Operations Officer at Plymouth Housing, and I'm joining my colleague tonight, Dennis Phil, who you heard earlier, and our board member, Mark, and also Lavina. I'm sharing Plymouth's strong support to renew the housing levy at nine hundred and seventy million. Over, year over year, we've experienced about thirty percent vacancy in our frontline positions. Our low wages were resulting in massive turnover and impacting our resident success. Last fall, we decided we could no longer operate without investing in living wages, and we raised our frontline wages even without having the funding to cover it. Plymouth adopted a budget this year for twenty twenty-three that included a deficit of more than two million dollars just for the frontline wages. And it's still not enough. More than fifty-five percent of our workforce currently is paid less than thirty dollars an hour. So for almost forty years, Seattle residents have come together to support this housing levy. It's a proven solution. We know this is needed right now, and we encourage you to renew the levy at nine hundred and seventy million to ensure that the critical wages for our staff and so that we can continue to expand to meet the needs in our community. Thank you so much for your support. I yield my time.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Brian Lloyd, followed by Lisa Walters. Good evening, Brian.
Good evening. Hello, council members. Thank you for this opportunity to speak about the housing levy. My name is Brian Lloyd. I'm with Beacon Development Group. We're a nonprofit housing developer. We've had the honor of working on projects with partners like El Centro, so you know, Community of Seattle, Seattle Club, and Ethiopian Village. The housing levy is the most impactful policy tool we have to combat homelessness and housing insecurity in the city of Seattle. I've had the pleasure of working on four housing levy campaigns, phone banks, door knocking, and multiple levy planning committees and stakeholder groups. And the amazing thing from my vantage point so far in this levy is how aligned all the stakeholders have been in the sizing and the funding plan for this levy. It's exciting. It's dramatic, and it gives us energy to move this forward. Great work by the Office of Housing and the Mayor's Office on this issue so far. The nine hundred and seventy million dollar figure is significant and also achievable. The levy will produce thousands of units. It will provide services and rental assistance to thousands more. And something new, as has been mentioned, it will help pay living wages for the frontline staff that make this work possible. As previously stated, the biggest barrier we have to our affordable housing in our community is the availability of resources. So this level levy is essential work for us right now. So please advance this levy for the benefit of our city and its residents. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Lisa Walters, followed by Camila Walter. Good evening, Lisa.
Good afternoon, Chair Mosqueta and members of the Select Committee. My name is Lisa Walters, and I am the Director of Government Relations for the Seattle Housing Authority. The Seattle Housing Authority is a proud partner of the Seattle Housing Levy with a long history of supporting it dating back to two thousand and two. We currently have committed a combined total of about twelve hundred project-based vouchers for extremely low-income how, excuse me, extremely low-income and homeless households and are proud to also partner with our nonprofit housing providers to make those housing available. The housing affordability crisis has never been greater in Seattle. Renting an apartment or buying a home is out of reach for many, and this shortage will only grow over time if we don't rise to meet it. For the properties that we manage, we have over about a five-year waitlist for public housing. And when we last opened our Housing Choice voucher, often called Section Eight Waitlist, we had approximately twenty-five thousand people apply for twenty-five hundred spots. So the, the need is great. And as our city continues to experience a housing affordability crisis that threatens the well-being of low-income families and homeless households in our communities, we applaud and support the proposal to renew the levy at nine hundred and seventy million. The dramatic increase of housing costs is impacting the livability of Seattle. The housing levy is the answer and will help us meet the urgent demands of this moment, accelerate and leverage investments for low-income people and families to be able to continue to live in Seattle. And we ask that you do this also with levy through an equity lens. We also are pleased to see support for our fellow partners for addressing the wage gap and issues that are happening for so many housing and homeless providers. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. And Camila Walter, followed by Joel Ng. Good evening, Camila.
Hello. Thank you for your time and thank you for hearing so many community partners and strong activists for this issue. My name is Camila Walter, and I'm the Executive Director of Real Change. Real Change is an organization that works for social and economic justice while publishing a local independent newspaper. We represent a community of hundreds of Real Change vendors, people experiencing homelessness and poverty who earn an income through low-barrier work opportunities selling the Real Change newspaper. I speak on behalf of our organization and the needs of our community when I voice my full-hearted support of this needed investment in housing here. Real Change vendors are among the community members who will benefit from these units. We are in the midst of a painful and growing housing and affordability crisis. It is at levels that impact the livability of our city, and we must renew and expand this levy to connect neighbors to the housing that they need to survive and thrive here. This critical levy will make an impact on the units that are available for our community members, and, and we need to go even further. Rising rents and compounding issues around homelessness and affordability are devastating, and this here is an opportunity to stand up for housing at a critical time. Thank you for listening.
Excellent. Thank you very much. And Joel Ng, followed by Kimberly Arrington White. Kimberly, as you listed as not present, so if you are listening, please dial in. Go ahead, Joel.
Hello, Chair Mosqueta and council members. My name is Joel Ng, and I'm a Principal at Edge Developers, an affordable housing developer here in Seattle. As a member of the As a member of the Housing Development Consortium and a larger affordable housing community. I urge you all to support the nine hundred and seventy million housing levy which is up for renewal. Seattle's longtime support and passage of previous housing levies has set the bar for what cities in our state can do to leverage other sources in the development of affordable housing. An award of City Housing Levy is the first important influential step in securing other public resources. The levy is is influential in that the amount is typically the largest public award amongst other local and state sources. Seattle's housing levy has prompted other cities to consider and adopt their own levy. And I believe the housing levy played an important factor in influencing. Two of our largest tech firms to pledge hundreds of millions of dollars to support affordable housing in the city and county. The work is never done and our need in Seattle is as great as ever. I cannot imagine our city without these important funds that are critical to the further construction of affordable housing and other community spaces. Often located on the ground floor of these developments. Please renew the levy at the proposed nine hundred and seventy million dollars. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Uh Kimberly, I see you still listed as not present. We can come back to you if you dial in. Kimberly Arrington White, please dial back in. Mark Lee followed by Richard Conlin, Conlin, council member, excuse me, I did not see you on our list. I would have happily come to you first. Um we will go ahead and have Mark and then we'll go to Councilmember Conlin. Good evening Mark, star six, thank you.
Um hi council member and community members. My name is Mark Lee, Senior Housing Manager for the Seattle Chinatown National District PDA. Uh we currently provide two hundred and eighty-three units of affordable housing in the CID and will be doubling our housing portfolio over the next two years. Um thanks to the housing levy funding. Skitta and our partners strongly support the proposal to renew the housing levy at nine hundred and seventy million. So we can continue to provide and develop affordable housing projects to meet the growing needs of our affordable housing for our families in the CID. Um the dramatic increase of housing costs has impacted our communities and is threatening the livability of Seattle. The two thousand twenty-three housing levy will help us meet the urgent demands of this moment, accelerate and leverage investments that low-income residents, families. People with disabilities, seniors can affordably live here now and well into the future. The levy will fund Resident Services Program for non-permanent supportive housing. Um this would help sustain our resident service program which has helped many of our residents who are experiencing housing instability continuing to stay in their communities and their homes. We urge that you renew the levy at two nine hundred and seventy million. Um this will help thousands of people and. And give them the opportunity to find affordable housing in Seattle and help to realize our shared vision for an affordable, equitable and an inclusive community. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Councilmember Richard Conlin, welcome. Sorry for the wait.
Thank you very much Chairman Mosketa. Uh this is Richard Conlin and I'd like to thank the mayor and the council for their work, especially on housing. Uh this housing levy is incredibly important. And I first want to say that as a homeowner and property taxpayer, I strongly support Mayor Harold's nine hundred and seventy million dollar proposal. It addresses our affordable housing gap. It's a bold step. It's the right size for Seattle. I'm also here as a representative of Watershed Community Development, which is a nonprofit that owns four acres in Georgetown. And we are constructing five buildings with six hundred units of workforce housing available to those making sixty percent of median income or below. Included in our development will be an early childhood learning center, facilities for small businesses in the arts and other kinds of community amenities. Our first building, we believe, will be funded without levy funds, but the other four will need gap funding like the funds that the levy could provide. There's twenty-nine thousand jobs within a half mile of our project. Which is why the Manufacturing and Industrial Council has welcomed our project and said it's the kind of thing that they want to see happen. Many of these employees commute an hour or more each way every day. And that generates greenhouse gases, that generate traffic congestion. If we we did a calculation and believe that if we can house five hundred of these employees in our unit. We will save a million highway miles a year. So this is a climate change uh solution as well as an affordable housing project. The levy is crucial for supporting workforce housing. I want to ask the council to make sure that these resources continue to be available for people making sixty percent or less. Those who work in Seattle and can't afford to live in the city need this kind of an investment. Thank you so much again for your work. I really appreciate it.
Thank you very much for dialing in and your service council member. Kate Smith followed by Jess Zimbabwe. Good evening Kate. And just star six to unmute. Kate, I see you still muted. Just hit star six to unmute and as you do that, we are gonna also tee up Jess Zimbabwe. And good evening Jess, just star six to unmute as well. There we go. Good evening Jess.
Good evening Chairman Mosketa and good evening. Thanks to you and the mayor and all members of the committee. My name is Jess Zimbabwe and I'm an architect and city planner and Executive Director at Environmental Works Community Design Center. Operating out of historic Fire Station Seven in Capitol Hill. Environmental Works offers our wholehearted support for the renewal and expansion of the housing levy. Our nonprofit organization has worked with community partners across Seattle for the past fifty-three years. To provide humane and well-designed affordable housing because we believe that housing is a human right. Today has been our honor to design over one thousand three hundred and eighteen affordable homes that were funded by the housing levy and through the hard work of the Office of Housing. This housing needs crucial needs in every neighborhood of our city. We were one of the founding members of the Housing Development Consortium and we join our fellow HCC members and partners here today to urge you to renew the housing levy at nine hundred and seventy million dollars. Thank you.
Thank you very much Jess, good to hear your voice again. And Kate Kate Smith, we'll come back to you. Kate, star six to unmute if you can hear me. And we'll also tee up Donald King. Good evening. Good evening Donald, I see you unmuted, please go ahead.
Well, good afternoon Chairman Mosketa and members of the Select Committee on the twenty twenty-three housing levy. Uh I'm Donald King and I'm President and CEO of the Nehemiah Initiative Seattle. The Nehemiah Initiative Seattle uh is helping our Black faith-based organizations. Uh with development of affordable housing on their surplus properties. Uh and on behalf of the Nehemiah Initiative Seattle and our cohort of faith-based organizations, I urge you to pass. Um through your committee positively on the renewal of the Seattle housing levy. We support both the renewal and the expansion of the housing levy because. This year's housing levy is growing to meet the growing needs of our Black community. With equity in our community that is subjected to rapid displacement resulting. In a Seattle that is less diverse than it has been in decades. Uh we're also members of the Black Home Initiative. And we believe that passage of the levy will help us realize Seattle's equity goals by also significantly boosting investments in affordable homeownership. That can begin to reduce the Black-white wealth gap by enabling more Black homeowners opportunities uh for uh that increase in their wealth. I urge you to renew the levy at nine hundred and seventy million dollars. This will give thousands of people the opportunity to find an affordable home in Seattle. Realizing that our shared vision for an affordable, equitable and inclusive. Is the right thing to do. Thanks so much.
Thank you very much. And I just see Kate Kate Smith off mute, so we'll come back to Kate and then we'll go to. Joe Thompson. Good afternoon Kate.
Good afternoon, thank you. I'm Kate Smith, a principal with S M R Architects and the Housing Development Consortium's Board President. I'm a hundred percent in support of the proposed Seattle housing levy renewal at nine hundred and seventy million dollars. The levy historically has supported the development, rehabilitation and operations of affordable housing throughout Seattle. But it seems like we're never able to keep up with the demand. We now have an opportunity with the proposed levy to make a real impact. We need a livable and equitable city for all levels of income. Communities and families need affordable housing, both rental and for-sale options where they've been historically rooted. The people who need affordable housing aren't just those currently unhoused. It's also teachers, frontline staff, your coworkers, your friends, your children's families. We need to support them together by renewing the Seattle housing levy at nine hundred and seventy million. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. And we'll go back to Joe. Joe Thompson, good evening.
Good afternoon Chairman Mosketa and council members. My name is Joe Thompson and I am the President of Mercy Housing Northwest. And I urge you to renew the levy at nine hundred and seventy million. Renewal at this level will give thousands of people the opportunity to find an affordable home in Seattle. And help us realize our shared vision of an affordable, equitable and inclusive community. The housing levy has created or preserved over sixteen thousand affordable homes in Seattle. Over nearly forty years. It is a proven effective solution. Without its renewal at this level, affordable housing production in Seattle will come to a virtual standstill. My organization is both an affordable housing provider and a service provider for our residents. It is critical that the upcoming levy renewal include funding for resident services at non-permanent supportive housing communities. Even before the pandemic, resident acuity had increased dramatically at all our needs during and since the pandemic and it exploded. Simply put, resident services help families not only avoid eviction but achieve housing success and meet other critical needs. And plan for better tomorrows for themselves and their children. We need these funds to leverage the full power of housing and to better compensate our line staff. Please support the levy at nine hundred and seventy million and please include funds for life-changing resident services. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, the next person that we have is Elizabeth. Elizabeth uh will be, oh excuse me, Elizabeth Archambault will be followed by V Lee. Good evening Elizabeth.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you and the council. My name is Elizabeth Archambault and I am a low-income senior that's currently living in. A Lehigh um affordable housing unit in South Lake Union. And I I wanted to call and and lend my support to the renewal of the two thousand twenty-three Seattle levy. Because the first barrier to getting affordable housing is actually have the housing built and maintained. So I think that we can't create um affordable housing without the this renewal of this um exceptional levy at. At two top two thousand twenty-three. Um and I because it will provide a dedicated funding stream. So I thank you for the opportunity to speak today.
Excellent, thanks for dialing in. Uh V V Lee, it says you're not present. If you are listening and you'd like to dial back in, please go ahead and do so. And I do see that Kimberly Arrington White is on the line now, so we'll go to Kimberly followed by James Bro- Broton. Good evening Kimberly.
Hi, good evening uh Chairman Mosketa. I apparently was called in on the wrong uh line when you were calling my name earlier. But again, my name is Kimberly Arrington White. I'm the Vice President of Supportive Housing at Plymouth Housing. I've been joined by a number of colleagues this evening. Truly grateful to you, um the committee members and for all of those who are working in support of the housing levy. This housing levy provides needed support to Plymouth Housing. It allows us to provide permanent supportive housing and trauma and form care. To more than twelve hundred residents, that number will soon grow to between sixteen and seventeen hundred in the very near future. Um it's our hope that while many of our residents will receive appropriate services and age and place. That a number of our residents will transition into graduate housing with ongoing support. Um we're finding that the residents that we are receiving um to provide services to require additional support. That as a result of the trauma they've experienced while they are unhoused um and even prior to becoming unhoused. The support that we provide includes a stable frontline workforce who earn a living wage. The staff are the building blocks of the community and this community provides stability and well-being to our residents. In addition, we are building out of behavioral health services to continue to maintain the residents' housing stability which we are currently at a level of ninety-seven percent. Finally, our units require upkeep, repair, maintenance, um supported services in order to ensure that our residents are living in a clean and safe environment. I one hundred percent support the levy of nine hundred and seventy million dollars over seven years. Um so that every member of our community can have a place that they can call home. Thank you.
Thank you and I'm glad you were able to dial back in. Uh just for our colleagues in the viewing public, we are getting towards the end of the folks who've signed up. We have three people who are present to testify and that would be James Bruton, Vanessa Tran and Dennis Rodriguez. Um and two that are listed to speak but are not present, um Skelcham, Kelmendy and V Lee. So if you do hear your name and you're not dialed in yet, please go ahead and call us and we will hear from you then. In the meantime, please go ahead James.
Uh good evening council. My name is James Broaden. I'm the Senior Pastor of Damascus International Fellowship that's located in Columbia City. And I'm also on the Board of Trustees for the Nehemiah Initiative. And I want and I appreciate this opportunity to speak with you this evening concerning the housing levy. Uh we applaud the progress that the levy has made over the years for the first-time home uh first-time homeowners. And also the sixteen thousand levy-supported homeowners. So we appreciate all the hard work that you're doing. But we are also urging you to expand your support to faith-based organizations who are, many of us are land-rich and cash-poor. And so as we support this nine hundred and seventy million dollar levy. Uh we understand that Seattle has a reputation of being very innovative and very inclusive and equitable. And so the Nehemiah Initiative acts as an advocate and our goal is to propose solutions to address the housing shortages. So as advocates for that which is diverse and that which is in impacts traditional ethnic enclaves. Then we have been lamenting the displacement of many of our local Black residents. Who are unable to remain in the uh community as as long as Black uh uh businesses and Black churches. And so the Nehemiah Initiative, uh what we understand is the power of land. And so we are urging you and asking you for this nine hundred and seventy million dollar levy. So we can also address the needs because as churches, as Black churches, we have many underutilized places and spaces in our land. That we want to now dedicate for to address the quiet crisis which is senior, a lack of senior housing. So we urge you and we thank you and we appreciate you for this bold step. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you very much. And Vanessa? Good afternoon. Vanessa Tran, you're welcome to speak if you can if you can hear me. Just still check your phones off mute. Looks like you're unmuted on, oh there we go, hi Vanessa.
Hi, I'm Fran. I'm an attorney at Cantor Taylor and also a board member of the Housing Development Consortium. In my work as an attorney, I represent developers and owners of affordable housing as they close on financing to rehabilitate or construct affordable housing. I'm here today to express my strong support of the housing levy renewal at nine hundred and seventy million dollars. Just in the last two years, Cantor Taylor has closed about nineteen transactions financed with city dollars, primarily eleven dollars. So it's safe to say that no affordable housing unit can exist in Seattle without city funding. The levy renewal will bring about three thousand new homes for people who need them most and will prevent thousands more from experiencing homelessness. Um this only scratches the surface to meet the region's current and projected housing needs, so I urge you to take bold action. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you very much. And we love hearing the kiddos in the background, so thank you for sharing that as well. And the last person who's present to speak with us is Denise Rodriguez. And V Lee Schelcom, Skelcom, um Kelmendy, if you are listening, you're still have time to dial in.
He can't make it. Skelcham can't make it.
Hello Denise.
Hi, uh thank you so much uh for your time. Uh my name is Denise Rodriguez and I am Executive Director of the Washington Home Ownership Resource Center. Our mission is to increase and preserve homeownership. Our mission is to increase and preserve homeownership in Washington, and we do that by educating and empowering current and future homeowners. We are members of the HDC as well as of the Black Home Initiative, and I also was a member of the work group that produced the State's Improving Home Ownership Rates for Black Indigenous and People of Color in Washington report. I'm testifying in strong support of the mayor's proposal to renew the Seattle housing levy at nine hundred and seventy million. Over half of all residents of levy-funded homes are people of color. The Seattle housing levy effectively advances housing justice and racial equity and should be renewed at the proposed nine hundred and seventy million dollar level. The housing levy works to bridge the racial wealth and homeownership gaps by creating safe, stable, and affordable home options for households of color who are disproportionately displaced, rent-burdened, and unhoused. The proposed fifty-one million dollars for homeownership will create and maintain three hundred and sixty affordable homeownership opportunities through new development, foreclosure prevention assistance, down payment assistance, and home repair grants. As a supporter of the Black Home Initiative, I urge you to join me in ensuring that this work can be done. Housing is foundational for individual and community health, safety, and resilience, and the housing levy is our best tool for investing in the permanent affordable homes Seattle so desperately needs. Please renew the Seattle housing levy at the nine hundred and seventy million dollar level and send it forward to the voters so we can approve it in November. I look forward to working together with everyone who testified in favor today and members of the council to realize our shared vision for an affordable, equitable, and inclusive community. Feel free to reach out with any questions or requests for additional information, and I want to thank you for your support of affordable housing and for your time today.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Well, that is a great note to end on. I don't see anybody else signed up for public testimony. Thanks to Councilmember Nelson. We know that Skelcham is not able to make it today, so we got through everybody who signed up for public comment and all the folks in the room and online. Reminder that we will have another opportunity for public comment on May thirty-first, again in the evening or late afternoon to try to accommodate as many folks as possible who might be interested in providing us with any feedback at that juncture. We'll have remote and in-person public testimony as well. That's May thirty-first at four thirty PM. We will have our next meeting on the housing levy coming up on Wednesday, May third, at nine thirty in the morning, where again, we will start with an overview from the community with their public comment and then get into the central staff's presentation with potential issues for identification and potential modifications. I want to underscore the really near unanimous support today, very much glowing enthusiasm from members of the community, both for the amount and for the types of programs that are included in the proposed levy. So we look forward to building on those great comments that have been shared with us today. And thanks to the folks who made this evening's presentation possible, the clerks, Jody, Amelia, and Elizabeth, our very own clerk, Freda Cuevas from my office, I T, including Ian and Eric and the whole crew, Seattle Channel as well, the comms team, and all of our council members that are here with us this evening, along with Aaron House, who leads our work on housing, and Chief of Staff in our office. If there's no further questions, hearing none, our committee is adjourned. See you on May third. Thanks, everyone.